Okay, good morning, everybody. This is Trey Pinner, Chair of the Downtown Parking Committee for our meeting of May 14th. This, welcome to our first virtual go-to meeting for the Downtown Parking Committee. Can I have the roll call, please?
Committee member France. Committee members.
France is here.
Pratt.
Here.
Labrie.
Here.
Newkirk.
Here.
Janeway.
Here.
And Chair Pinner.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And before we begin, as you know, we're doing this in a new way. So we appreciate everyone's involvement in this and hopefully we don't run into any technical difficulties as we do so. And I'm sure many of you have been getting used to this process of meeting this way over the last couple of months. We're sorry for that, but we're thankful for staff for taking the time and energy to get us up to speed on all this stuff and continue to make our meetings possible for our work to continue and for the public to continue to be engaged with us during this difficult time as we try to deal with many of the issues for our community for keeping us safe and keeping it, keeping us safe and keeping business moving forward at the same time. So thank you. All right, this time I'm going to open up a public comment. Sarah, do we have any public comment requests?
We do not have any, oh, there goes my webcam. Okay, we do not have any hands raised right now. Megan, if you could advance the slide. So just to remind any members of the public who are present who wish to speak, if you would like to make a public comment, please use that raise lower your hand button. You see that's a little hand with a green arrow. When, when we are in the public comment section of the meeting and we can go ahead and call on you. I'll notify you when it's your turn to speak. So if anybody would like to make public comment right now, go ahead and use that button. And I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'll close public comment. And we'll move to agenda item number five, the approval of the minutes from March 12th, 2020. This is to remind folks, we did not have a meeting in April due to the health issues. So if I can receive a motion on the minutes, please.
I'll know approval.
I'll second.
I have a motion for Mr. Newkirk. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second for Mr. Labrie. Sarah, if you can remind us how we're going to handle the roll call for voting, please.
Sure, we will be doing roll call votes. So Mindy can come back on and do the roll call and we'll do it just like we did at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Can you please do the roll call for the minutes?
Committee member France.
I support.
Pratt.
I support.
Labrie.
Approved.
Newkirk.
Yes.
Janeway.
Hi.
And Chair Pinner.
Yes. Thank you. Motion passes. If we can move to item six at this time, we'll turn it over to staff. This is regarding our 2020 budget update. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just it's great pleasure to be with everyone again. And thank you so much to the Downtown Parking Committee for moving through this time with us. For our meeting last month, we weren't able to get up to speed. We were getting council and planning commission and the HLC and ABR up to speed. So we're finally there. You can imagine there's a lot of things that have happened to downtown parking. Since the crisis hit, just like many of the downtown businesses, downtown parking does not have a lot of customers. And that has changed the financial landscape quite a bit. And so before I introduced Sarah Clark to walk us through some of the budgetary hits and talking about that and how we're managing and how we're getting through that. Mr. Chair, after this item, I would like to, to move up the Jason Harris introduction to be right after this. But so Sarah, why don't you go ahead and walk us through some of the budget facts that are happening in real time. And just to let you know about this, usually when we do a budget and we bring it to you and we prepare for city council, it's a, it's a six-month process. So needless to say, we don't have six months to prepare a budget since the COVID crisis hit. So we are moving in a fluid way and responding on a day-by-day basis with educated guess about what might happen. There's a lot of uncertainty. So in terms of planning, we have to be nimble and we have to figure things out as they're going. And as the, as we work with the federal government, the state government and the, our local county government to open up and, and navigate that course. So as you're looking at what we're talking about, just bear that, that background in mind. Go ahead, Sarah.
Thanks, Rob. Can everybody hear me okay? All right. So I'm here today, as Rob mentioned, to present updated projections for our budget for fiscal year 2020. We came to you back in February with our proposed mid-cycle adjustments for our fiscal year 2020 and fiscal year 2021 budgets. At the time, the picture looked much different than it does now. So we're back today just to talk not so much about 2021 right now, but about where we think we're going to finish out this fiscal year in light of the, the closures and the health crisis. So to start with, we're going to go through our revenues quickly. PBIA, as you know, we usually generate about a million dollars a year through that assessment. This year, in order to provide economic relief to the businesses in the downtown area, council approved a waiver of the first quarter fees, so the fees from January to March. And so we are now projecting that we're going to be losing about a quarter of that revenue for this year. So we're, we're going to finish the year probably around $750,000 for FY 2020. Hourly revenue is also going to take a pretty big hit because we have had to, to stop collecting fees in the parking lots. So the parking lots right now are open and available for parking free of charge. So we had, we had estimated that we were going to finish out at fiscal year 2020 at about $5.2 million in hourly parking revenue. At this point, we're not estimating that we're going to be collecting any significant revenue beyond what we've already collected this year. So we're probably going to finish up close to $3.7 million this year. For build revenue, we were, we were on track to come in slightly under budget for that under the normal circumstances. We paused sending out our billing this, for, for during these closures. So we are going to come in a little bit under that. It's not a huge hit, but coming in only at $11,680 this year. And then the monthly parking permits, obviously, given that the fee collection is suspended in the hourly parking lots. We, we are also, we've also suspended the collection of monthly parking permit fees. So those are going to be coming in not, again, we're just sort of assuming that we're only going to be collecting the revenue that we've collected so far that, this year. And so that's about $967,000 so far. Commuter parking permits, same deal. We currently do not need a commuter parking permit in order to park in those lots. Parking enforcement in those lots has been suspended for permit parking. So we were able to generate $257,000 in revenue so far this year, and we're not anticipating having any additional revenue generated for this fiscal year. Residential parking permits, right now enforcement of timed parking on the streets has been suspended. And enforcement of parking near city college has also been suspended, given that they've gone virtual and they're online now. So there's not an urgent need for customers to purchase permits right now. However, we do anticipate that parking enforcement is going to resume at some point. And at that, at that time, all these individuals who maybe have put getting their permit on hold will come in and get their parking permits. We are encouraging people to continue to renew their permits through the mail right now so that we can avoid having, having a big rush of people come into the office when we do reopen that office. So we are still continuing to get some revenue for that, but we are going to come in still probably significantly under what we normally would have for this fiscal year. And that's revenue that may not be, we may not lose entirely. It's just because we're not enforcing now, maybe somebody who would have renewed their permit now in May is going to renew it, you know, in July instead. And so that'll end up, we'll end up getting that same revenue, but it'll just be later than we normally would have. EV charging station fees, again, the demand for parking in our lots is very low right now. So we're not, we're not seeing a whole lot of demand for EV charging stations. So that projection has also been revised down for this year. Rent, rents in our, the properties that we rent out, particularly to the MTC Theater at the Libero Garage, the, the Wheel Fund and the REA Building, the Greyhound lease. Those have all been deferred for two months per city council. We are also guessing, you know, that, that the continued economic difficulties will persist. And so again, we're going to be taking a hit on rent there, down from about $476,000 this year to about $365,000. So about $100,000 in, in rent revenue lost. Grants and rebates, no changes there. That's the grant that we got to put the EV charging stations on the top of lot six. So we still expect to get that as that work finishes up. Miscellaneous and reimbursements, that's, that's sort of an account that bounces around a bit because that's our over short. And then our pass-through revenue, which is the general fund funding that we get to support things like the Crossing Guard Program, the Ambassador Program, the, the New Beginnings Counseling Center, the DO Maintenance Contract, things like that. All of those revenues we'll still be getting. So slide. So on the whole for revenues coming in about $2.4, $2.5 million under what we had projected that we would come in for this year. So on the expenditure side, permanent salaries and benefits, projection hasn't changed there. We are realizing some savings over our original budget because we have positions that we've been able to hold open for periods of time. And that's something that we're going to continue to use as a way to save going into next year. Hourly salaries and benefits, we are going to see some savings there because obviously at this point, unfortunately, we're not, we're not paying our lot operators. We've had to let most of those, those people go. While we've been, while our operations have been suspended out in the lots, we are, and the same with our Crossing Guard Program. We are still, we are still, we still have some hourly staff who are working in our office and providing support services there. We also do still have our ambassador team. They, that was paused for a moment, but now they're back out doing limited shifts in the area. And so those hourly employees are, are working again. For utilities, not much change for the electric bill. Credit card fees, obviously, given that we've, we've, we're not processing credit card transactions out in the lots right now because we're not processing any transactions out in the lot right now. Those will be significantly under the original projection. We had already projected a bit of savings there because the city renegotiated its contract with the, the credit card service provider. So, so we should see some savings there. The downtown waterfront shuttle is, is going to be a good amount of savings. That stopped running at the beginning of April. I think it only ran for a few days in April. So we have suspended that agreement for the time being. And we will not be providing any additional payments to MTD for the downtown waterfront shuttle as long as it remains suspended. Special projects, this is the PBIA, the contract with Walker Consulting Group for the, the PBIA update. Rob can give you a bit more information about that later, but that, that project is going to be changing a bit. We expect to spend some of that money this year, but not all of it. The Safe Parking Program, no changes there. That's a pass-through expenditure, same with the DO Plaza contract. The Crossing Guards, as I mentioned before, unfortunately, we've had to lay those individuals off because of the closure of the schools. And the Downtown Ambassador Program, as I mentioned, we're expecting roughly the same amount of expenditure that we would have had there otherwise. So in general, we, you know, there are some savings obviously associated with unfortunately having to be shut down for the time being. So we're going from about 9.2 million projected expenditures for this year down to about 8.4, 8.5 million. Slide. So the bottom line for our budget, originally, we had projected that we would finish this year with our operating budget, about $283,000 to the good. So again, this is before we spend any money on capital. This is just what it costs us to operate the lots and maintain the lots on a day-in, day-out basis. So we were operating, projected to operate in the black. Unfortunately, that picture's changed significantly. And we are going to, to go into the red in order to just support our, our operations right now. It's the tune of about $1.4 million. Slide. And so the bottom line for our fund balance, so these are our reserves. We were expecting to spend approximately $720,000 of reserves this year in order to cover our capital expenditures. And now, given the operating deficit that, that we have, that, that has been created, we are expecting to spend about $2.4 million of reserves. So we are expecting to end the year with about $6.5 million in reserves. And now that's going to go down to about $4.8 million in reserves. We have put a pause or canceled all of our non-essential capital spending right now. So not all of that $1 million capital expenditure is going to be spent. In fact, a lot of it is not going to be spent. So next year, we'll be able to return some of that to our fund balance. So this is, this is not quite a final number. Like I said, we are putting a pause, putting a hold on all non-essential capital savings. But those transfers, because they were already budgeted, they're happening regardless. So just when we get to the next fiscal year, we'll be transferring those unspent funds back into the fund balance to replenish the reserves a bit. So this kind of isn't the final number for where our reserves are going to land at the end of this year. But it is the number where we're going to land for our budget, for our budget projections. So that's all I have right now on that. If we want to have any, any comments or questions.
Thank you, Sarah. If you want to have a question or comment, please just turn on your Cameron webcam and I'll recognize you, Mr. Dayton.
Oh, Mr. Chair, I was just going to say, you can see, you can see when people don't come downtown, how huge it is for our budget. And just to give you a little sense, as we hear from committee members about the, as the finished, you know, the, the fiscal, 20 fiscal year budget. You know, we're already working with council on, on the next one and projecting a 25% for the year loss. We're not sure exactly what that's going to be. We're just kind of guessing that number and then, and then going with that. So that's our planning. I call that a planning number, but not, not really knowing exactly what's going to happen when we open up and, and what the state of downtown will be, the attractiveness or openness for people to return and back to normal. What is, what is normal? Is normal going to be like in the past or is it going to be something new where people park less? So we really do not know. And the other thing is we're, as, as Sarah said, we're assuming no customers through July 1st. So as we're talking in the next week to three weeks to start opening up some semblance, we're going to be looking at that. Of course, we don't want to open the, the facility up unless we have enough parkers to, to, to compensate the, the labor cost of, of operation. So that's another consideration. But yeah, we're, we're looking, you know, interesting conversation, be interesting what committee members are thinking, any ideas about this year. We're obviously the next item after Jason, we're going to be talking about the reopening strategy. And that's a, that's all, all hands on deck ideas that we want to hear. But this is, this is the dire situation that we're in.
I think, let me know, if I have a question here, and let me know if this is better asked in the reopening. And my question's going to be, what trigger points have we selected or rubric for picking those? And I mean, it was clear when we decided to open the gates and let it be, but what mechanisms are we going to use to say this is the time where, are we going to have any other discussions about, you know, we did a PBA forgiveness? What's the, what are the, what are the rules we're going to have going forth on this? So I don't know if that's best in the budget or best in the later discussion.
Yeah, that's the, that's the next item, reopening strategy and talking about appropriate timing. It's all kind of blended together though this morning.
No, I, I understand that. Um, and that kind of goes to my two other comments were salary and shuttle. Those two are also, what's the, what's the mechanism for deciding to reactivate the shuttle if we do? And what's the mechanisms, the obviously connection of gates being down is, is also the connection of salaried employees at the kiosks.
That's, that's a great question and that, that's a budgetary question and not, not 2020, but obviously 21 because MTD is already projected to not restart the shuttle through July 1 and also through the summer. But we've put MTD on notice that it, based on our planning number for next year, that we do not believe we can pay for shuttle subsidies. So we're sending a, an official letter out today, today or tomorrow with that statement. We've talked with Jerry Estrada, the director, and let him know that, that our budget is in dire straits for next year. We really don't know what's going to happen. So we're planning that the shuttle will not come back, at least from funding from the city.
All right, thank you. This time, Sarah, do we have anyone? If you want to add any comments to the, this issue from, do we have any public comment? I don't think we have anyone on for the public.
We have a couple of members of the public present, but it doesn't look like we have any hands raised right now. So if any member of the public would like to speak, go ahead and raise your hand.
Okay, so we will, I'll, I'll open public comment at this time, but I will continue to ask if there's other members before I close public comment. Is there any other members wishing to make a comment on the budget?
So Rob, I had a question. Sorry, I had a question for Rob. So it sounds like, you know, the fiscal, I know this, this item is fiscal year 2020. For fiscal year 21, since that's got to go forward pretty soon, are we going to look at that? Or is that just going to be something you're going to deal with council on?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. We have our Public Works Budget Presentation to City Council coming up. I think it's the end of next week. And what we're doing, what the strategy is, what the city administrator has us doing is that he has us all presenting 5% and 10% loss scenarios. Now remember this, this, these budgets take a long time to put together. So there, so we have the, in hand, the, the council has the existing budget that we had already completed. And now we're amending that. So the conversation with council is the planned amendments and talking with the council about what are the ideas that we have about changing the current budget to accommodate what we think is going to happen. So uncertainty on the what's going to happen, uncertainty on when it's going to happen. And then also not a lot of time to put together a budget. So in answer to your question, it's, it's pretty fluid. We're going to present to council a, because we're, we're not a, a completely enclosed enterprise, but we are an enterprise fund. So we'll be, we'll be telling council, we have a planning number of 25% loss, revenue loss for next year. We don't know if that's high or low. And then we're going to give them a list of things that we're, we're proposing. And we'll get into a little bit of that in the reopening strategy, things that we're proposing. The shuttle obviously is a big one. That's a, that's a, that's about a $900,000 item for us in our budget. But when you think 25%, our budget's about 10 million. We're looking at a $2.5 million loss and use of, some use of revenues is real. The reserves, it's really nice that we have that reserves. This is what reserves are. They're for days like these. So it's, it's not, but we want to be really conservative in how we use those. So as we have that conversation with council, as we get more information about, I think what will be really telling is what happens in the next month and to in terms of how the downtown can or will reopen. We will be coming back to the committee and letting you know, pretty much in real time, what is, what is our new thought and what is our new plan? Again, it's going to have to be fluid, a lot of uncertainty. So bear with us as we go through that.
Thank you. Any other members of the committee wishing to speak?
Yes, Chair Pinner. First off, I just want to really appreciate Sarah, you especially, but all the team for, in the middle of everything, being able to make these budget revisions and obviously some significant decisions, you know, on a really fast turnover. And I would just kind of comment that indeed, we're looking at a 25% revenue loss or gap next year between this current fiscal year and next fiscal years hit on our reserves. I think from a policy perspective, we absolutely have to look at how we can rebuild those and think about income once better days are here. Because downtown parking is a significant utility for the downtown that's going from enhancing the downtown through plazas, paseos, shuttle and all that to, we're not going to have the capacity to even maintain our own infrastructure if we continue on this. So, you know, we're just going to have to take that hit. That's what that reserve is for. But definitely, we're going to have to be in a totally different context in terms of how we think about income moving forward, expenses too.
Thank you, Mr. France. Any other members of the committee?
One quick note on, on revenues, especially looking at the next FY. And this is perhaps another blended topic for the reopening strategy, but just something that we should as a committee bear in mind. If recommendations are made to council to suspend funds when the lots or when downtown reopens, you know, what, what kind of period council may want to. I, I would foresee council inviting the lots to be open without fees for a period of time. Personally, that's my opinion. But I, I would, I would think that we probably want to plan for that in some aspect and what that might do to our revenues for the next FY. As more and people are invited back to downtown and what strategies may be implemented to invite people back.
That's really good. Committee member Janeway, we'll, we'll get into that in the item after we introduce Jason Harris.
Okay, Sarah, just ask one more time before I officially close public comment on this agenda item. Any members of the public wishing to speak?
We don't have any hands raised, no.
Okay, so I'll close public comment for this agenda item. And then, again, I think as you said, Mr. Dayton, we're sort of blending some of our questions into the next item. So I think, I think this was a good snapshot, just to give us a quick overall. I have a feeling we're going to kind of, we're going to be coming back to this topic a lot. Is, is budget, where we're at, I think it's, it's, it's almost like we're going to probably need almost an update monthly on this item, to be honest. We, I think it's going to be a standing need every month, what's happening with the budget. We can't just go cruising along as we do and periodically look at it. So and, and possibly, yeah, I was going to say the finance subcommittee, but probably really this needs to be brought to the committee every month just to give us a, a quick update each time. So we'll, we'll, we'll consider that for future agenda items. Um, is there anyone else that wants to speak on this item? If not, I'm going to end item number six. Okay, seeing no cameras and no mics added. Before we move to item number seven, a parking lot reopen strategy, I'd like to move up item number nine at this time. Mr. Harris has another meeting. He has been in meetings constantly. I know that because I said. I know that because I sit on a couple other task force with Mr. Harris and he is working diligently. Mr. Harris is working incredibly hard and fast in his new position. So thank you for joining us today. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Dayton for any other introductions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jason Harris comes from Santa Monica and previously Phoenix. Before that, he has a lot of experience in economic development. And we're very pleased at the city of Santa Barbara to have his his brain power, particularly at a great time that we're dealing with COVID crisis. What what better opportunity to get him in right before that happened? I know it's a big burden for him and and but we've got all the more strategic power to navigate the field we're in, and he's been instrumental in doing that with on the mayor's task force. And we're glad to welcome him here to the downtown parking committee. He's going to be a great asset for our committee and for the things that we're doing downtown to re rebuild as we move forward. So take it away, Jason. Thanks for being here this morning.
Certainly. Good morning. Good morning, Commission, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this morning. And and thanks for the accommodation of moving me up on on the agenda as referenced, 7:00, 8:30 that I I need to jump into. But as as both Trey and Robert referencing, I'm the city's newly hired economic development manager. I took the position on March 30th, so right at the kind of early onset of the pandemic. And, you know, immediately began kind of the triaging of assessment of of what is the full impact of of really the stay at home order, the the closure of the business community, the fiscal impact to the city and obviously economic impact to so many businesses, workers in the economy at at large. Just a quick recap on on my experience. So as referenced, I was an economic development manager for the city of Santa Monica for about eight years up until this past March. And similarly, worked with our downtown there, our parking operations there, manage business improvement districts and in a variety of other kind of assets throughout the city. So very familiar with parking operations, the strategies, pricing, what a critical operational asset that parking is for a downtown and a central business district. So I look forward to working with with this body to strategize and move forward thoughtfully and how parking operations can help support downtown revitalization, how parking operations can help aid in revitalization and ultimately be an asset. There's some really creative, interesting ideas that are starting to generate in in very difficult times, such is the one we're in. I think that's really the call of the order is is getting extremely creative and thinking out of the box. To give an update to this body, the mayor organized a business advisory task force on on May, actually back in April 24th, we've met three times. And it's it's a body made of 20 business representatives and business organization representatives, kind of a cross section, principally representing the hospitality industry, but restaurants and lodging and retail functions, a lot of downtown representatives, as you can imagine, on that body. It really was a bit of a think tank to generate ideas and feedback to the city as to how the city can assist businesses reopen and recover as quickly as possible. And so we're just in the somewhat early phases of generating ideas. One of those is specific to, not only specific to downtown, but potentially citywide, which is how recognizing the hospitality, the food and beverage service operations, restaurants, cafes, maybe to a certain extent, bars, how how they are one very restricted in their operational limitations currently only take out delivery service. Many, as you probably have noticed throughout the community, are are just not operating under that model just because it's not economically feasible. But as we anticipate the staged reopening, they'll probably be able to reopen here in in short order, but with a pretty substantive reduced operational capacity. Again, just economically not feasible for for that business group. We have over 400 of those businesses throughout the community. And and there's such a critical quality of life and activation for the commercial districts where they're located throughout the city. And so one of the initial ideas that's being presented, what conceptually to the council this past Tuesday, more formally, this coming Tuesday to council is an idea to allow outdoor dining in a less formal manner of which we would be looking to close roadways where it's applicable, close on-street parking where it's applicable, inapplicable meaning, you know, where it's it's safe and operationally viable, as well as ease regulations for allowing outdoor dining on on private property, be it surface parking lots or maybe open space on private property. And just to allow those businesses to have, I I call it expanded operations. It's really just to have operations. They they have none currently other than takeout. And so how can we get creative and allow some level of outdoor dining to enhance those operations today? And then obviously, as I transition into some partial reopening to really enhance that. So that's kind of an initial recommendation coming from the task force. And wanting to move that one forward, there's other concepts that are being refined, looking at city permitting regulations process. That's maybe a little longer term of of process implementation, as well as obviously, as you can imagine, kind of communications and marketing, just to ensure that the public is confident when we are able to to go out back into engage in public commerce, which is, you know, slowly happening, but also just messaging broadly to the community. And then, you know, kind of concurrent, all of this is is just looking at how do we activate and support our commercial districts, principally downtown. It's our largest, obviously, concentration of business businesses throughout the city and how we can get creative utilizing, you know, public space and activation, really engaging the local residents to to support the downtown, to engage in the downtown. So those are just some initial ideas coming from the task force. Ultimately, you know, my my main focus and function will be establishing a economic development plan for the downtown. And and so some of these initial ideas are going to be feeding into that. But right now, it's been triage in addressing the acute need of of supporting the business community in this time of of business closure. So with that, I'll just open it up for any kind of questions and comments that folks would like to to take forward.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. I did want to let the committee know that I am sitting on that task force. We've been asked to do so, helped to represent downtown parking and other issues of downtown. So I want to acknowledge and thank Mr. Harris for the work he's doing. I've had multiple meetings already on this, and I sit on two of the subcommittees. So I'll be able to keep our committee apprised. If Mr. Harris isn't able to join us, I can be able to report out on the efforts of the committee at future meetings. So we'll have that connection continually. I see Mr. Labrie has a question.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. Jason's pleasure to see you. And and I really appreciate what you shared, your mission and your role in the city is very much in line with our mission statement and the parking committees, you know, purpose. And I just wanted to comment on two things that you said. One, one, the the expansion of sidewalk activities and pushing into the parking resources that this committee with the with our mission statement as our backdrop, I I think really wants to be engaged in that conversation and supportive. And I think it will. Yeah, I don't want to speak for the whole committee, but, you know, for myself, I would be very supportive of that expansion. We have capacity in the garages. And so moving some of that parking activity off the the street to facilitate more pedestrian activities, something that lines up with our goal of encouraging economic and cultural vitality. And then also, I just want to mention that this committee, and again, speaking for myself, have been very supportive of the idea of the introduction of housing downtown. And the role, I just say that the role that the parking system could play in in facilitating that or solving some of the problems could be very significant. And I just want to offer up from my perspective that that again, I'd love to see this committee and the parking assets employed to help really encourage that redevelopment and vitality. So come to us, we love, we would love to see you and hear your ideas and lend support to lifting and improving the vitality downtown. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Penner and Commission Member Labrie. That's that's reassuring. I I I concur and and support your thoughts. I'm going to go back and review your mission statements. Apologies for not doing so prior to this call. But I, you know, not only does parking provide obviously a critical operational necessity for downtown and providing obviously parking, but is also, you know, a critical asset in how it can support housing. And, you know, I was I was optimistic to see that you've already employed one of your assets that I think it's maybe the I might, I won't try to guess the name, but what one of your your surface parking lots to support and afford a housing project. I saw that being identified. And I think there is a way to kind of co utilize, right? To maintain public parking, because you can obviously incorporate public parking in in almost any mixed use development, but also leverage those assets. I'm speaking really to surface parking to potentially develop housing in appropriate time and manner. But in addition, just to put it out there, there's been some creative, interesting ideas of of using some of the parking decks that are adjacent and front on to some large building facades. It's like drive-in movie theater type of concepts. So there's just a lot of creative ideas of of how to utilize the the parking assets, not not just for parking, right? There are fixed physical assets that can be can be staging grounds and podiums for special events and community gathering spaces. And and wholeheartedly agree that I think in a longer term vision of, you know, it's surprising that we have, you know, Santa Barbara has to be one of the few, you know, coastal downtowns that still has free on-street parking. So no suggestions there. But, you know, I think longer term, how how we kind of collectively work together to advance the interests of downtown. We're obviously in challenging times currently and a lot of, you know, transition. But, you know, I think we've got some great bones to work off of, and it'll be it'll be exciting to see, see how we can re-envision opportunities going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Do we have any other members of the committee wishing to make comment at this time? Okay, seeing none, I will.
Thank you, Chair Penner. Mr. Harris, thank you so much for still coming to our city amidst the the significant challenge that we have. And I just want to acknowledge and appreciate the triage and the real creative thinking that's gone into addressing some of the the needs that we have right now. Obviously, things typically move very slow in in Santa Barbara, but this is not the time for that. And I think as long as we're in a situation where everything we're doing is reversible, to give ourselves the space to try things. And I hope that this committee can be very supportive of your leadership in trying things. Because, yeah, it's absolutely what we need to do. It was a pleasure to watch the presentation at council and the discussion on Tuesday. Hopefully, obviously, concerns arise, but we can create the space to make adaptive changes that are really going to serve the downtown community in this weird context that we're in. And just one thing I'd like to say, kind of moving forward, I really do hope as the downtown shuttle is something that we do not have to to rely on as we have bike share. I'm really hoping that we can get generate more foot traffic of all different types in a safe way for the downtown. And I really hope that that can be a tool that can help replace some of what the downtown shuttle was delivering.
Yeah, no, I Commission Member France, I I agree. And and, you know, one thing I'll throw out there for the group, I haven't heard it referenced, but it was a big kind of philosophy approach program that we really advocated in Santa Monica, which was a park once strategy, which is, you know, we we similarly had 10 parking structures throughout the downtown Santa Monica area. And the idea was, you know, park once and then circulate and do your shopping, your visitation, and and not necessarily rely on multiple vehicle locations. And, you know, I think Santa Barbara has this kind of a similar opportunity where, you know, we've got an abundance and a diversity of of locations and sites. And so as we, you know, think going forward, you know, how we can help the patrons, it's an interesting mindset. I've spoken to community members of, you know, hearing some of the remarks of, oh, parking's difficult. It's hard to get to downtown and this and that. And I'm honestly, a little bit flabbergasted. It's there can't be a more accessible downtown. There can't be more abundance and accessibility. Obviously, I think the one thing is, obviously, the locals probably know. You know, parking is so well designed that unless you know where it is, and we have such stringent signage requirements that, you know, to sometimes finding the parking can be a little challenging. But but no, it's, you know, this this community is blessed with such incredible assets. And, you know, it's exciting to to be able to work with you all and and really advance the interest of the community. So I look forward to doing so.
We thank you for recognizing two of our issues. We do talk about a lot, park once. That has been a topic we promoted and worked for for a long time. So I'm glad you find that as a beneficial use. And our difficulty of creating our parking lots to be so noticeable. So we do, we do talk about that quite often. Is there any other members of the committee to wish to speak at this time? Okay, so again, I just want to thank you, Mr. Harris, for what you're doing. I know I want to just comment that one benefit, obviously, is you've been in other jurisdictions. And we are not the only jurisdiction dealing with this issue. So I know the benefit with you, Mr. Harris and Mr. Dayton have the ability to watch and reach out to other communities and get information as well. So we appreciate that source or depth of knowledge that you will be able to bring to our community by reaching out to other development directors and economic development directors doing this kind of work. And hopefully, you're connecting with them. And you're all picking each other's brains for what might help our communities return to success. So with that, we know you have another meeting to go to. We appreciate it. And we'll be, we'll be talking soon. Actually, I have a meeting with you at 1 o'clock today.
Yep, that's it. Take care all. Thank you. Nice to meet you all.
Okay, with that, we will move to item number seven, reopening strategies.
Okay, so, Mr. Chair, this is, this is this, we're hoping this would be a really good discussion. It's obviously a fluid deal. We're the lots have been closed. We have let go of our hourly employees, our kiosketeers. And so the we don't have an operation for them operate, we, you know, like if if we wanted to open today, it's going to take a little bit of time to to open. So what goes into reopening? What are we thinking about? There's, there's so many different considerations here. It's it's such a complicated moving target, and then you throw in a bunch of uncertainty. It really keeps us on our toes. And as staff, we're and the downtown parking team talking about this almost every day about what are we going to do? And it's great to have Jason Harris on the call because talking with him too. Think about the different variables we have to think about. There right now, there are no, there's no on-street parking enforcement. We do have people who are gradually coming back into the the parking facilities. In other words, there are cars in them. There's there's not a lot. We don't know what, who those parkers are, are those employees, which typically happens when when there is no payment. Employees will talk, would use the lots all day versus when there is payment, they'll find other options, parking further away or doing some shuffling or using an alternative mode even. So we don't know if those are employees or if they're customers. With the parking enforcement on the street not happening, if With the parking enforcement on the street not happening, if, if we opened the lots, people would have begun to park on the street because there's no time limit. So you have to think about that. We have to think about our kiosketeers and bringing them back. And then the other thing that we're going to be talking with council on, and we want to gauge the council's feeling on this is we've been, as a committee, we've been preparing for a different day. So we've, we've done some homework on where is the future? We've talked about bringing in license plate cameras. We already have the capacity to pay with credit card right now in the column. So for instance, even if the gates were down right now and there was not a kiosketeer, you could pull a ticket, you could come to the column, you could put in the ticket and then get your, your fee due, put in the credit card and the gate would open. And no one's even required to be there. That's very similar to what Passano Wevo is doing now, although they also have as a complement to that, to that column pay option, they also have pay stations. They also have the license plate recognition. So all free, free fares, free times in the lot, the, 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 the gates open before the customer even engages with the column or has time to do that. So that, that is, it makes the operation smoother. Remember about 60% of our, all our parkers are free fares, so they do not pay. And so we're, we're talking with council about, do we want to, in order to beat revenue targets next year, reduce expense and protect our employees? Do we want to engage that system that we have now? And have the closed system? Remember, we are recommending as the, as the committee already did for a a 24/7 gate-down closed system pay period that is moving forward. We talked to finance committee about that last Tuesday and they moved that forward to the council. So we have that option. We know that there's going to be a, if council, it gives the nod to it, we know that there's going to be a learning curve that we're going to have to have our hourlies come back fully protected and helping the customer at the column understand how to do that. The other thing that we have in place is if there are problems and there isn't someone there, they can press a button on the column and we can talk to them about how to resolve issues or even open the gate for them. So remotely. So we have all these different options available to us. We're looking into how the team is coming up with ideas of how could we could ramp up very quickly when we do get the demand back in downtown, when parking enforcement does come back to the street. Balancing all the things that we talked about, will the, will our customers feel comfortable with retail and restaurants open? To some extent, will they feel, will people feel comfortable coming downtown? We don't know these things. So we're not sure we can just go ahead and put the gates down and have, have people learn about the column unless we have people there to teach them. We don't know how long that interim period would be, somewhere between one and four months. And we don't want to bring people back and incur a bunch of costs for revenue we're not receiving to make the, the problem worse for this year. So these are the types of things that we're looking at. The city administrator, the public works director, very supportive of the strategies we have to, that we're talking about. I'm talking about automation, talking about employees coming in to teach motorists how to use the credit card system. We're, we're talking about the possibility on getting a quote on license plate readers. If we can get the license plate readers in, remember 60% of the fares will be very smooth because the gate would open. We're talking about, should we try that out in one lot? Should we try that out in three? Should we do the whole system so it's consistent? We already get compliments from people about Passano Wevo, even though we don't run that, that they like that system. So we know that's attractive to, to customers. These are the types of the things we're dealing with. So we'll, we'll be happy to entertain ideas, thoughts, new strategies, and, and, and we're listening, taking notes.
Thank you, Mr. Dayton. And yes, a lot to figure out in this, in this situation for timing. Do we have an idea yet on the economics, if you were to say what it would cost per lot? I know if a lot has more than one entrance point that affects it, but let's just assume not. What it might cost per lot to put in a license plate recognition system, you know, or let's call it the gold standard situation in each lot?
We do, we think it's somewhere between 20 and 30,000 a position for the cameras. We, we're, we're getting a quote right now. We're even asking, we're asking for diff, you know, how much would it cost? Did you just one? Would we have a cost savings with the whole system? Can we lease the system? Is, is the company willing to do some sort of loan thing so we can, so we can deal with cash flow issues? But there, there's, there's a balance there because we're dipping in our reserves a lot, super scary for a lot of, a lot of us. Thinking about automation that could save a lot of money, but then lose that high-touch feel of, of customer service that we've come to been known for, this kiosketeers. And then also wanting to move forward with a system that really makes sense. And, and, you know, when I think about it in my head, I think moving to automation is, needs to be done really excellently. So do we, do we risk spending? Do we go into the reserves more to get a system that was probably going to be more reliable and efficient for our customers at this time is kind of the big question.
Thank you. Well, before I turn it over to other questions, you know, my thoughts on this would be one. We've certainly talked about this idea in the past. It's, it's not a new idea for us to look to move to this direction. So it's not, it's been flushed out a little bit in our discussions before. So I think that's, you know, we need to bear in mind, this isn't the first time. I would be encouraging of the idea to pick a lot or two lots and, and work towards that, try it a couple lots. I think your comment about it's happening in Passano Wevo and you're getting good comments about it. There's a little bit of a, working, it's, it's being tested out with us having, with us, without us having to do it.
Right.
So we're getting, we're getting that feedback that people like it. And, you know, it's almost like, why don't you have that system? So it's, it's almost as if a questionnaire has gone out and a survey has gone out and we've gotten, you know, feedback on it. So I think we really need to think about that as a, as a tool. And obviously there's lots all over there and there areas besides Santa Barbara that do this. So it's not like we're breaking completely new ground. So those are my thoughts. I, I would be, you know, really trying to balance the issues of costs at this time with our difficulties, but also really understanding that that might be creating a savings. And in the long run, offsetting that. So at this time, is there any other members of the committee that wish to comment on any matters of reopening? France.
Chair Penner, thank you. So I want to basically appreciate staff's work in two ways, which is one, I think downtown parking has always, I think Victor and the full team really has always embodied this commitment to excellence. And so while I think that whatever changes we might need to implement will be tricky to do well. I, I am assured that our staff will make sure that they happen really well. So I have a lot of trust for our team to implement whatever we choose really well. Secondly, I think that all of the discussions that we've had prior about license plate recognition and about all of the sort of the adaptive ways that we might need to automate the lots and have that flexibility for whatever within our downtown parking system in the future. Really, I think, Rob, you all went to the, the conference this past year. You know, the, the parking conference and brought in, brought back all these best practices. And thank you so much for having done that because if we had not done those exercises, right now we'd be clutching at straws. And instead, we really have a good sense of what we can do and how difficult it might be to do it. And I would just say, we're burning our reserves. Right? But like one-time costs that will help us operate in the new reality, right? And I think that we are, I think, you know, just people's germophobia in terms of interacting with kiosketeers is probably also going to be a lingering thing. So right now, we're putting kiosketeers at risk, even potentially, you know, our customers at risk. In the future, even after they might not be at risk, there might still be, you know, lingering phobias. So I think this is a shift that we really need to embrace. And I think that we're well-positioned to do so. And I have a lot of trust in our staff to be able to, to figure that out.
Thank you, Mr. France. Although that was not a motion, I'll second everything you just said. Are there any other members of the committee wishing to speak on this item?
Mr. Labrie? Yeah, Mr. Chair and Mr. France, I also would agree with that. And you know, as you are planning, Rob, staff, if we automated the, the second Granada Garage exit onto Antipamu, you could solve, you know, get rid of the kiosk and solve the, the lane width issue. But I just think, I want to just echo this idea that now is, is the right time to do this. So let's do it.
Thank you for that.
Mr. Dayton? Do you have something you wanted to say? I'm sorry.
No, I was just thanking Matt for that and, and Ed, and just appreciate the support truly Victor and Sarah and Roy and Dion and the excellent staff we have on downtown parking. You know, just amazing. It was such an honor to even come in and be able to work with them and, and navigate these times. It's, it's, you know, it's, it's can be, can be frightening. I think it's got people on their nerves on our team, but I think that we, we have, we have been putting the tools in place and already been talking about this. So I think it's possible to move forward. It would be great to, to hear any thoughts about cameras or no cameras. I feel like I'm, I'm hearing yes on the cameras. We still have to get a cost, talk about that. But that is kind of the business decision of, of the day in terms of, in terms of the times and, and, you know, maybe we'll know more, maybe a better time for that decision is going to be in a, in a couple of months where, when we see if, if Santa Barbara is really want to come back downtown when we're open. So, but your feelings are greatly appreciated on that.
Thank you. Before I go to Mr. Newkirk's comments, I want to ask a question and then you may be able to answer mine in any comments Mr. Newkirk has. I'd like to know what steps we will need to go to or to counsel. So more talking about a timing, what steps would need to be taken if there are additional steps? So keep that in mind. But first, let's go to Mr. Newkirk for comments.
Yeah, I would say I'm genuine, generally in support of trying something out, although I think understanding the cost would be helpful and being more definitive about that. The one comment about cameras, I think it'd just be good to have a really clear procedure about data storage and how that kind of people's personal travel data is stored or deleted or how that's dealt with. Just from a kind of like, I mean, you're going into the lot, it's a public lot. So there's, you know, you're kind of inviting that information share, but I just, I don't know, that's, it's a minor concern of mine about like going to these kind of automated systems is who can access that data, how, how that's managed and handled. So.
That's really, that's really great question. And what's really great is that Passano Wevo system wasn't working very well. And our staff actually advised Passano Wevo to get a system that was using the same, same equipment as we use. So they, they use the same company as we use and, but they just bought more of the, of the tools, including the cameras. So we can look at their system and talk, ask them questions like that. The, the, what we're talking about, and when we went to that, Trey, Trey Penner, our chair referenced that the staff did go to that conference was very informative and the cameras is just amazing what they can, they can pick up. And what they do is they, they grab and the camera grabs the plate and then converts it into data right away in, in terms of a, of a number. A picture of the plate is also kept for verification that it's reading correctly. And then, and then that's associated with the ticket. The, we save money. I think we spend about 50,000 on five million tickets every year. So the plate becomes the ticket in that situation. And, and so there's an opportunity to get, get rid of that cost as well. And, but in terms of storage of that information, it's not like, it's not like our video footage that we're taking. We have live video footage throughout the, throughout the garage now where we're looking for, it's mainly security issues and understanding who, having records of who is doing either criminal activity or vandalism in the, in the, in a facility to keep people safe. We have to store that information for a couple of years and we have the servers to do that. This information is a little bit different in that it's, it's, it's not like a movie. It's a picture. It's converted to data. And then the, the free, the free take, the period, period tickets can immediately go away. It's the ones that are fee due that don't pay that move to a different process. And again, we, we talked about this briefly, but in the past, but what we'd like to see is that when someone doesn't, doesn't pay, that we, we give them the opportunity to pay online and then that, the ticket is essentially converted to, the, the fee due is converted to a ticket and then, and then it goes on the registration. So it's automatically paid and we don't have to chase them down. And so we're working with PD also on how to do that because they have that system now, obviously. So yes, yes. The other thing is required with, with LPR as it's known, is that we have to go to council and we do a public hearing that says that in this, in this public facility, we're going to be using the license plate recognition technique and disclose that and hear concerns and council will be able to hear those. So that's something that if we decide that we're going to potentially pull the trigger with the vendor and get that equipment, we would go to council first with that public hearing that we would use that. Another thing to note is that the waterfront is now using it in the Harbor Main Lot. We want to work closely with them to make sure that we have synergies and consistency with that. They, the way they use it is they use it for their permit holders, which again, we have permit holders in our system. So they would not need to have a, a, a permit or a permit card. They would just have their plate, their plates in the system. They, they drive up, the, the gate opens, they, they exit, the gate opens. It's just a lot more customer friendly in that, in that regard. But yes, we do have to be concerned about public interests and, and having people's personal information and what we do with that. And we'd want to protect it, protect it, of course, at a minimum, but then also make sure that it's not tied so that people can find out where people are. That's not the goal. The goal is just to use that information for the pay, the fee due and to understand which car is, is, is at the ticket exit now. So a great question though, and we're going to have to be maneuvering those as we move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Dayton. Before I go on, if there's anyone else that has other comments from the committee, I'd like to ask Sarah if we have, at this time, I'm going to open public comment. If there's anyone from the public wishing to comment on this agenda item? if we have, at this time, I'm going to open public comment. If there's anyone from the public wishing to comment on this agenda item.
I don't see any hands raised right now. If there's anybody from the public who is interested in speaking, go ahead and put your hand up.
Thank you, Sarah. I'll move on to ask for any other committee members, but public comment will remain open at this moment to give you an opportunity to do so. Are there any of the members of the committee that wish to speak on this matter? Okay. Thank you, Rob. I do, again, the reason I ask timing is if if I understand correctly, we could start the movement of paid use of a lot without a kiosketeer there by using the column system, by putting that card in the column and paying that way. That would not require any council action as far as LPR issues, license plate recognition systems. Am I correct?
That's correct, but we do want to, we do want to engage the council on that shift. So that would be a part of the budget discussion that we.
I'm trying to do a timing because if you, if you, I guess what I'm trying to do with is committee is strongly encouraging LPR, if staff is strongly encouraging LPR and we think it's the right way to go and to be consistent with, you know, the San Nuevo's lot mirroring that. And I guess in comment to your saying, is waterfront actually using LPR right now?
They, they do, they, not for the hourly revenue ticket holders, but for permits. So if you're a permit holder in Harbor Main, the gate opens for you because it recognizes your license plate.
I guess the reason I asked that is that would mean council would be already sort of engaged and supportive on LPR philosophies, technologies to the question Mr. Newkirk asked, data issues. So maybe we've have, the ice has been broken before us through both the Paseo Nuevo and through the waterfront lot. So I guess I'm just suggesting to you and committee, if, if we need to in the near future bring this as an action item for this committee, so you have the, staff has ability to go to council to have the tools. So if we need to react on this, we can do so in a, in a quick way if that's, if that's desired.
Well, that would, that would be desirable and it's perfectly legitimate to take an action item, take action on any of these items that we have. Our reopening strategy includes the various tools that we would need to reopen. So that's fine to make that recommendation. And then we, if we did do that recommendation today, we would share that with the council in our, in our budget process. So that would be nice. And then, as we've said before on this meeting and the call, it's our plan to bring this back to the committee on a regular basis every month to discuss as we move, move forward and rapidly, fluidly reacting to the current conditions. And next month, we would have a cost estimate on what it would take and the committee could take action relative to the cost estimate. So you could do two things. You could take action today and say to the council, yes, we think that we think that moving into a a credit card system, an automated system is important and can be done. You could also say, yes, we believe that the supplement of LPR will make that go much smoother and be more customer friendly and we we want to understand the cost, but we think that's a good idea. And then next month, when we have the cost, you could say, yeah, well, that's too much or, or that seems right, given the, everything we know and the risks.
Thank you. I think you laid out an appropriate roadmap. Are there are there any other questions of staff? And then if not, is there anyone, is there a motion to move forward on this item as Mr. Dayton has suggested? We have slow, we have slow hands on the mouse. Since I can't see the committee members.
Are they still there?
No, they're still there.
Hello, is this on?
No, they're still there.
Hello, is this on?
Somebody, but I don't have a camera. Somebody, but I don't have a camera. Mr. France? Yes, I'm also getting, yes, I'm somebody. So yes, if there's someone of the committee would like to make a motion in line with Mr. Dayton's recommendations.
I would like to make a motion and if we can use Mr. Dayton's recommendation language.
Okay, so let me see if I can understand. Sorry, I'm getting a neck go. I don't know if someone else is getting that. I don't know if someone else is getting that. Okay, I'll try to help out here. So if I understand correctly, we're looking to make a motion to recommend to council the, to move forward on a credit card system only and the concept of license plate recognition. Although we're not prepared to this time with, with the understanding of waiting to understand the cost. I don't know if that's a clear enough motion. Is that what you're speaking of, Mr. France?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table. Mr. Labrie, is that a second? Okay, so we have a motion for Mr. France and a second from Mr. Labrie. This time I'll open it up for comments. So if you have a comment that you'd like to make on the motion, please turn on your camera and your mic and I can recognize you. Mr. Janeway?
Just really quick, as a very small comment. If there's anything or any other, I know there's a lot of like bells and whistles that can come in to what kind of technology we employ. I would just urge any thoughts or options to be presented that we can highlight as contactless. I think that's a real buzzword right now in terms of alleviating people's fears about interacting with people and with objects right now. So things like digital payment, like Apple Pay, if that's like an add-on feature that we would consider to something that we would implement, I would just encourage those options to be presented because that would be part of kind of the whole package of putting that forward to the public.
Thank you. So I see that is, I don't know if that's an adjustment to the motion or just sort of language that needs to be added, Mr. Dayton?
Yeah, we can, we can add that language to the motion. If it's okay with the motion maker and seconder.
Let me take other comments first and then if we need to adjust the motion, I can do so. Are there any other comments on the motion? So please turn on your camera, Mr. France.
Chair Penner, I just say, I accept that comment about touchless or contactless. I think that fits in with the motion. And in terms of costs, you know, the two things, one, one-time costs are something that we're going to have to bear if they have, it makes sense over the long term. And then two, obviously, that's sort of that tricky issue of potentially cashless. But, Mr. Dayton, that's not something we're trying to address within this motion. The cashless.
Cash, no, or credit card only is cashless. But we do have the capability of loading what would be the equivalent of a, a gift card. So downtown parking card that you could come to the office and we can have those ready at the column and the intro. One of our ideas is to have those ready at the, at the column. So if someone wants to write a check and get a $20 card or a $40 card, they can have that. The other thing is, we've talked about having an app in the past. It would be great to have an app where you're paying at longer increments for your parking through the app. And then your license plates, you know, in the app and it's all seamless so that the, so you don't have the, the issues of pain at the column. Of course, we want to get rid of, we want to make, we want to have the customer experience be, be quick. No one likes to wait to get out of a parking facility. So if we can position the payment strategy, as you're already talking about touchless and more flexible, one of those is to have an app that's downtown parking that we can use for other things that, that has the notifications on. So when you drive in, it can, notification comes on, on your phone that says, thank you for coming to the Library Garage Facility. Welcome to downtown. Would you, would you like to, to pay for your parking through the app? Yes. By the way, here's some discounts in the area. Some other people are participating. Make sure you visit here and here and here, you know, you, there's a lot of flexibility and, and integration of downtown with that, with that possibility. And I know that the downtown Santa Barbara has always talked, and I think it's the last three years about some sort of app where we move into the digital age and we've, we're, we're better connected with our downtown. But we, we can integrate those and that's a great suggestion on the contactless and flexible pay options.
Mr. Labrie, I see your camera on.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask if the technology would allow, if you get the license plate reader, it'd be very nice to, as a downtown system user who frequents the system a lot, if I could just set up an account and monthly be billed and not be doing any sort of transaction work in and out of the garage and that camera just keeps track of it. If you described that earlier, I apologize, but I'd want to make sure that we had that flexibility.
We would be looking at that. And the other, that's a great comment. The other issue with that is that, as you recall, we pay, we were able to lower the fees on the transactions quite a bit this past year. But remember, I think we're, we were up in the area of $150,000 a year in credit card fees. So anything we can do to do exactly what you said, where you're taking a bunch of your parking experience and pay for it one time, then we can minimize those fees. So that's something we want to do as a strategic business exploit. And so that's great. Yeah, we should look at that.
Thank you. Can, if I could be clear on the motion, the motion is really to put forth the, the general concept council. We understand there's going to be lots of design issues and technicalities that we as a committee are going to want to work through as, as you guys, committee is bringing up here. So I want to make sure the committee understands this is not like the one and only time we're addressing this issue. The goal, I think, of the motion is to give staff direction to go to council to advise them that our committee is, is looking to do this and and more so than ever. So that's really the, I think, the goal of the motion. I need to make sure I do a couple of things. I'm not sure if I formally public item, so I'm going to make sure I do that at this time and comment if that's, Sarah, there's no one wishing to do so?
No, we do not have any hands raised for public comment.
Okay, so officially close that. And then if we have no other, if swishes to turn on their cam comments, if not, I'm going to ask for the roll. And I'll probably have Mr. Repeat the motion. So we're clear.
Yeah, so the motion this morning on this item is to recommend the council to move forward with a credit card system, automated system, and to investigate LPR, getting the understanding of the costs and also creating other flexible and contactless pay options.
I think that reflects the motion very well. Thank you. Last call for any comments on the motion. This time, seeing no cameras, I'm going to ask the roll call, please.
Committee member France?
Hi.
Pratt?
Approved.
Labrie?
Approved.
Newkirk?
Yes.
Janeway?
Hi.
And Chair Penner?
Oh, yes, thank you. For that, appreciate it, committee. Um, thank you, Mr. Dayton. Um, we have about less than five minutes. So I think we can move. You handle number eight in that period.
Yeah, so this is really, just really quickly, what this is, is this is our annual PBIA that we're going to be going forward to council. This is, we do a, we do this on consent. There's a public hearing that we do. We do this every year. This is the annual, this is the normal thing that we do. This, what this is not, is this is not the, the other PBIA effort that we have with our consultant. And just to give you, before you vote on this, what we're doing with the other item, which was the PBIA exploration of our, our whole budget, how PBIA works, the whole structure, a, bringing it up to industry standards. What we're doing with that is we're engaging with Jason Harris and the consultant. In fact, the three of us will be on a call today to talk about how, how we can turn that effort. We got about $100,000 left in that contract. How we can reframe that effort that to also encompass the, the effects of the COVID crisis and, and what we can do and how we can advise this committee and the city council to reinvent ourselves in the way, the way we collect revenue to the benefit of downtown, to the incentive, incentivization of the types of development that we want to have downtown as a community and to create a way to make us whole, which was partly the original target, but also encompassing the current situation. Jason Harris is excited about that conversation and believes that we need to use that that resource that we have. And today on the call, we're going to talk about how we can do that. We will continue to report back to you next month on how that's going, that conversation. But today, again, this is the PBIA status quo annual re-up of, of the, of the investment for parking business investment area. So any questions, I'd be happy to answer. And also Sarah's on the line if you have anything more detailed than that.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, if you have a question on this item, please turn on your camera and we can recognize you. Okay, I'm going to just also ask Sarah, do we have any public comment regarding this matter?
I do not see any hands raised for public comment.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Newkirk, do you have a comment?
I guess I have a question. Where the recommendation is that the city council through the draft report? Do we have the draft report? Or is it just a staff report? Is that what the report is?
It's the staff report. Sarah?
Yeah, it's just a staff report at this time. The official report, annual report that we supply every year will be submitted to council and that will be posted to council when that's prepared, so.
Okay, thank, yeah, so this is report is really nothing about the report from our consultant. Report from our, uh, consultant. It's the report. Status quo report.
It's the status quo and the slide that Sarah has up also indicates. Um. Well, it actually does. Oh, the second bullet, council waived the PBIA fees downtown for January through March. Which were probably about. Two hundred and twenty-five to two hundred and fifty thousand. Council waived those fees as a, as a stimulus. Uh, for the, uh, for the downtown so that they, in the time of need. Would not have to flip that bill. So that's, that's gonna, uh, of course, come out of our, our reserves.
So is that? Philosophy there of the waiver, that's just an informational item for us. It's not really. It's not, not, it's not something we are responsible to, to take any recommendations for future work. Our recommendation is to continue PBIA as scheduled.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna, at this time. If there's no other comments or questions from the committee. Seeing no cameras lighting up, I will ask for the, this is, uh. Do we have to make an emotion, Mr. Dayton? I believe we do.
I think, yeah, we do. We do want a motion. Sarah, can you help us out with that?
Uh, sure. I don't have the recommendation in front of me, unfortunately. Um, but it is to, uh, recommend a council status quo for PBIA, I believe. Mindy should be able to read that off of the agenda. Um, I'm sorry, I just don't have that pulled up in front of me.
I have it here. If Mindy doesn't have it. I want, and I just read it as a motion. On Mr. New Kirk.
You can go ahead if you want. Um, I was just.
Uh, the recommendation is that the committee. Um. We, has received the 220. Uh. Parking and Business Improvement Plan Assessment Report and recommended the city council to accept. Report. And approve the PBIA as status quo for fiscal year 2021.
I'll second that.
Okay, so I've made the motion. If you can record that and Mr. New Kirk, New Kirk has seconded the motion. This time, can I have the roll call, please?
Committee member France.
Hi.
Mr. Pratt.
Hi.
LeBrie.
Hi.
New Kirk.
Yes.
Janeway.
Hi.
And Chairpin.
Both and affirmatives.
Thank you.
All right, that closes out our agen- agenda for today. Um, I want to thank all the members of the committee. For the extra effort it takes in some ways to do this type of, uh, meeting. Although it doesn't include driving to the. The buildings, but it does require extra work on all of our parts to be ready and. Have the appropriate. Uh, equipment and all that to, to make this work. So I want to thank you all. For doing that. And I especially want to thank staff. Their extra effort to be ready for these types of meetings. Um, we really appreciate it. I do ask that, uh. You all stay safe and, and, and healthy. We appreciate all, all members' efforts to do so. And, uh. I would encourage you to, at this time, more than ever, is to. Watch city council meetings. There's a lot going on and. It'll help inform all of our decisions. As a committee to keep on top, uh, with what council is, uh, being faced with. Very difficult time for our community and, and, and everyone. So. It's gonna be some heavy lifting, I think, to get us, uh, through this. And I know our committee is poised and. Has the. Uh, talented members and staff to do so. So I thank you for that. And, uh. Mr. Dayton, do you have any other closing comments?
Oh, no, my, Mr. Chair, uh, just appreciate the committee doing this and we'll make sure the donuts are in the mailbox, uh, right before the meeting. Uh, next month. Hopefully we'll be in person, though.
Yes, hopefully we'll get back to an in-person meeting as soon as possible, but, uh, thank you. All right, committee members, we are gonna close, uh, this public, or this, uh, the meeting of the downtown parking committee at this time. And look forward to our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Chairpin. Thank you, Rob. Thank you all. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you all, and thank you to Megan and Mindy for administrative support on this.